Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The agenda for this meeting can be downloaded at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, Chair Daniel Kater.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to call to order the May 2nd, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Kater.
Here.
Vice Chair Strickland. Commissioner Bashir Tash. Commissioner Biddle.
Here.
Commissioner Core.
Here.
Commissioner Coleman.
Here.
Commissioner Neal.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for attending tonight's Planning Commission Meeting. This commission provides an opportunity for public participation in the development process throughout the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of projects, including subdivision maps, zone changes, general plan amendments, and much more. When applications are received, the City Planning Division analyzes a request. Planning staff will then present the facts about the project along with their recommendation to the Planning Commission, who will approve the item or make a recommendation as appropriate. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 3A, Public Statements.
In keeping with the City Council's new resolution, public statements are now received at different times depending on the item. I will call on Madam Clerk to call for public statements at the appropriate time, so please listen carefully for the correct time to speak.
Non-agenda item 3B, Public Statements.
3A.
3A first. Which is Agenda Item Public Statements.
Agenda, oh, we'll start with Agenda Item Public Statements. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission regarding items listed on tonight's agenda? Please note that if you are here for non-consent public hearing, Item 6A, now is not the time to speak. You will be given an opportunity to do so at a later time. Seeing no speakers wishing to speak on the agenda during public statements, we will now move on to non-agenda item Public Statements. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda? If so, please step to the microphone and state your name. Seeing no public speakers, next item, please. Madam Clerk.
Agenda Item 4, Consent Calendar Items.
Please note, all matters listed under consent items do not require a public hearing and will be enacted by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of said items unless the staff or commissioner request specific items be discussed and/or removed for separate action. May I get a motion to adopt Consent Item 4A?
I'll make a motion to accept Item 4A.
Thank you, Commissioner Biddle. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Core. Commissioners, please cast your votes.
Motion passes with Commissioner Strickland, or Vice Chair Strickland, Commissioner Bashir Tash, and Commissioner Neal absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 5, Consent Public Hearing Items.
Now is the time for Consent Public Hearing Items. Please note, if the item is not removed by a commissioner, staff, or member of the public, the commission will vote on all items in one motion without further comment. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the non-consent public hearing items. At this time, I will open all of the consent public hearing items. Does any member of the public wish to remove a consent public hearing item? Seeing none, does any commissioner or staff wish to remove a consent public hearing item? Seeing no requests on consent public hearing items, at this time, the consent public hearing items on tonight's agenda are now closed. May I get a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on the consent public hearing items not removed, incorporating all staff memorandum and revised staff recommendations? And can I make one clarification from staff? There was an item, oh, never mind, it's the public hearing item.
I would note, though, while I would make a statement on Item 5A, we did receive a very late comment. There was a memorandum prepared that is on your dais. Staff's recommendation does not change, though. It still recommends approval.
Thank you for noting that memorandum, and we have all received it. So may I get a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on the consent public hearing items, incorporating all staff memorandum and revised staff recommendations?
I'll make a recommendation, or make a motion to approve Items 5A and B.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Biddle. Commissioners, please cast your votes.
Motion passes with Vice Chair Strickland, Commissioner Bashir Tash, and Commissioner Neal absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 6, Non-Consent Public Hearing Items.
Now is the time for non-consent public hearing items. Before we begin, I'd like to explain how the hearing will be conducted. Staff will first give a report, then those in favor of the project will be able to speak. Those in opposition to the project will be able to speak after all of those in favor have spoken. Each site will be given a five-minute total time to provide rebuttal comments. Individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but the questions will not be answered until the public hearing on that item is closed. If preferred, written comments may be given to the clerk, who will provide copies to the commission. Please remember to be respectful of others participating in the hearing, and please refrain from repeating remarks of previous speakers, and present any new comments or thoughts in a concise and clear way. Mr. Johnson, would you please provide us your staff report?
Yes, thank you. This is Item 6A. It is a revised plan development review, meaning you've already approved plans for the site, but they are requesting revisions. Site's generally located in southeast Bakersfield, Hosking South H, Highway 99, State Route 99 just to the west. It is a 13-acre parcel, and they are looking to develop primarily the northern six and a half acres. Project site is Zones C2 PCD, which is a regional commercial, planned commercial development, and I'll talk a little bit more about that towards the end of my presentation. Providing a little background, in 2019, the site was approved for a gas station on the corner, fast food on the eastern boundary. You had a car wash in the middle of the site, and then the southern portion was developed with a self-storage. Those plans expired, and in February 2024, the applicant came back and changed the plans to be exactly the same on the northern portion, but removed the self-storage on the south portion of the site. The applicant is now requesting to change the location of the fast food and the car wash, so now you have the car wash closer to the residential and the fast food towards the middle of the site. Because of the proximity to residential, staff took a closer look at the car wash. The car wash is approximately 20 feet from the property boundary, and the nearest residence is about 15 feet from the property boundary with a separation of approximately 35 feet. So with that, the applicant submitted a noise study that we requested. The areas surrounded in blue exceed the 55 decibels, which is part of our noise element of the general plan, and that would be without any noise reduction measures. They are proposing some silencers on the blowers, an eight-foot-tall sound wall at the entrance, and landscaping which would buffer the sound, and with that, you can see with this that the noise levels have substantially reduced on the eastern side of where the residents are, but there's still a little bit of noise to the north. This shows the landscaping that's being proposed, so this is focused in on the car wash. You have the Japanese blueberry that'll line the eastern boundary between the properties. Staff believes that's sufficient landscaping. You have two coast live oaks that'll be on the north side of the car wash, and that is the exit area. And then you have two desert willows. The coast live oak would provide some noise coverage, but it's questionable if the desert willow provides any noise reduction measures. Again, a requirement of the noise study was that an eight-foot-tall sound wall be put in along the entrance, and this is 105 feet long, and you can see it highlighted there. The zoning code requires a six-foot masonry fence between commercial and residential. The applicant agreed to an eight-foot fence, and staff is proposing that that's, not, excuse me, an eight-foot wall, not a fence, and staff is proposing that this wall be a sound wall as opposed to just a hollow masonry wall, so that the cavities of the block would be filled with either concrete. Optional, if you wanted to further reduce noise impacts to the north, we do have several other car washes that are located near residential within the city, and they have like a curvature sound wall at the exit, which would then funnel the sound more towards, in this case, towards the center of the development as opposed straight across Hosking Avenue into the residence to the north. Additionally, you may want to consider, if it's so desired, to upgrade the desert willows to something more substantial in terms of landscaping. The C2 Zone does allow for car washes and car detailing, so therefore, your commission cannot deny that request. However, the planned commercial development or the PCD Zone does allow your commission authority to require special design standards and regulations. So that would mean, therefore, if you wanted to add additional sound walls or landscaping, you can do that through the PCD Zone, but you cannot deny the actual car wash. You could adjust the car wash location if you wanted, but not deny it in its entirety. We did receive three late comments that came in very late today. One of them, friends of the Bakersfield Kit Fox and Environment, and we did prepare a memo with that, and again, that's provided for your review. And then following that, which didn't make it into the memo, we did receive two comments from the individuals shown on the screen. They are actually abutting residents to this site, and they are in support of the project. There's three findings for approval. The first, that the proposed development plan is consistent with the general plan and objectives of the zoning ordinance. The second, that the proposed development will complement and harmonize with the character of the surrounding neighborhood and community. And third, that the proposed development justifies the exceptions from the normal application of the zoning code. Staff believes that with the recommended conditions that we're proposing, that these findings can be made, and again, your commission may add additional conditions or remove conditions if you find that necessary. And with that, staff recommends approval, and that completes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Good evening. This is Hyman Mergue, representing our client, behalf of DeWalt Corporation. We are a big proponent of having this project brought to light with approval from every one of you. And as discussed, we will accommodate any sound, we'll accommodate the proposed sound recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Hi, my name's Nav. I'm an owner representative on this project, been working on this project for several years now throughout COVID, and familiar with this project, and a part of the general construction company in regards to the active construction on this project. Thank you, very good to be here today. Thank you for your recommendation of approval, and I am here to answer any questions in regards to current status of the project or current questions that staff or the planning commission might have, and I appreciate everyone's time.
Excuse me, what was your last name?
Brer.
Can you spell that, please?
B-R-E-R.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers in favor of the project? Seeing no additional speakers in favor, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? So please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. I'll note, I see no speakers in opposition. Does any commissioner have any questions for the public or staff on this item? Please remember, this is the time to ask questions, not give opinions. With that, Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair Kater. This is for, I don't know, staff or the developer. What are the anticipated hours of operation of the car wash portion?
(Audio cut off.)
I'm sorry, I did miss that when I read through it.
No, no, it's okay. I believe it's 7 through 10.
That's correct. We, there's daytime and nighttime decibel levels that are in our noise element. So we said that this car wash must cease operations at 10:00 PM and can open no earlier than
And again, we didn't look, I didn't read the noise study. So the noise study considered the noise into the evening?
Excuse me, so the daytime hours allow for 55 decibels, and then nighttime hours allow for 50 decibels. So what they evaluated was where the 55 decibel limit was, because there will be no noise coming from the car wash after 10:00 PM.
Okay, thank you. What steps are proposed for controlling noise during construction?
As far as steps required during construction, I believe one of the conditions of approval is the eight-foot sound wall. I need to look at the wording of that. Needs to be either built prior to, excuse me, the eight-foot masonry wall that lines 637 linear feet of the eastern boundary of the property adjacent to the residential buildings has to be built, I don't want to misinterpret it, but has to be built either before or before beginning construction on that car wash lot or before opening of that car wash lot. In terms of if it's after the car wash lot is constructed, like before it gets its certificate of occupancy, I would have to consult with our pre-construction services and pre-construction consulting to see what steps would need to be done before construction on the actual project, but we would only be constructing during active construction hours allowed per City of Bakersfield Code.
And what's there now? Is that a wood fence now?
That's correct. It's a wood fence.
And then I wanted to move on to the landscaping issue, because I noticed that there were a couple of comments in your staff report about the landscaping along H Street and then along the Kern Water District. Can you talk a little bit about that? Because I didn't see a plan, it was hard for me to tell on the plan what the landscape looked like along the Kern River, the Kern Water.
The canal?
Canal, thank you, canal, thank you.
So this is the overall landscape plan. As you can see, so you'll have South H that would be on the western side of this project, and there is a drive aisle or driveway that you can see would come from South H into the site, and that kind of bisects the middle. To the north, there's landscaping in, near the canal, and that's because they're going to underground the canal. So Kern Delta, which owns the canal, will allow landscaping in that portion of the area, because it's going to be underground. Just south of that driveway, a portion of that will be underground, but not all of it, all the way down to the southern street. And so Kern Delta will not allow any landscaping within there, because it's their easement, and they need that easement open for their maintenance. And if there's landscaping in there, it's possible that they wouldn't be able to get their maintenance vehicles in there. So they are not allowing any landscaping south of that driveway within their easement. Therefore, the area that you see highlighted in red, staff believes that that area needs to be improved with landscaping, and there's a condition of approval for that for several reasons. One, since this is all one parcel, we consider that landscape frontage of the road, so you need to meet the frontage requirements for landscaping. And additionally, where you have 10 spaces or more that face the roadway, you need a four-foot-tall hedge, or a berm, or a wall, or a combination thereof. So that area that you see highlighted in the red oval area will require a new landscaping design.
What did we do with the Love's Truck Stop at Taft Highway and H, South H, where the Kern Canal runs through there? What did we require on that? Do you recall?
Their landscaping was outside the easement, and we considered that, so like, again, where that red highlighted areas, that's how Love's was their entire way, so they had to put landscaping in, it would be, in this case, on the east side of the canal, outside the easement.
I'm walking the fine liners, I don't want to provide opinions, but I'm thinking that, you know, it probably wasn't an issue in the past, because we weren't developing out there along that canal, but this is not the first project that's come along the canal. And, you know, at some point, they're going to want to develop the southern part of that lot, and then we're going to continue to develop all the way back down to Taft Highway. So is there a comprehensive plan to deal with this canal along H Street?
I would say there's not a comprehensive plan. Kern Delta would like it underground as much as possible, but they're not going to rely on a single developer to underground outside of their frontage. Give me one moment. McKee, and so I'm just looking at the aerial, and McKee already has residential abutting the canal, so the only ability to provide landscaping, and I would say, west of the canal, along South H would be if the whole thing is underground between McKee and Hosking. And so there is no plan, but we'll take it, I'll just say, we'll take it as development occurs as we can.
So is the plan that each lot that gets developed going down South H, I'll just assume that it only gets developed south, for the sake of argument, that there will be some condition of approval that'll require the undergrounding of the canal, or what is the anticipation there?
As you can see on this aerial, this is a big portion of undeveloped land, and it looks like there's a little portion to the south of it. Other than that, it already is developed with residential. So we would not require those residents or that subdivision to come in and underground and add landscaping.
Any talk about the city completing those portions?
Not that I'm aware of, no, not at this time.
All right. I think that concludes my questions. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Commissioner Core.
Okay, this is a question for the owner. So this project came on in March, and then we approved it, and then now the location changed from being south to along the residential. What's the reasoning for the change?
The reasoning based off of that is the car wash tenant appears, their interpretation of their business model is it's more marketable facing Hosking than facing South H. That was their request, and just the reason why we're here.
Okay, and then you mentioned you were with the project since 2019.
Yes.
And there was a study conducted by LSA on the noise levels. How much do they defer from 2019 being getting on the south end to putting it in the new area?
I would refer that question to staff, as they've had the interpretation of the original sound study and the new sound study with the sound wall. My interpretation and my understanding of where we're at now was that for this to get to the point where we are, where staff recommends approval, that we had to meet similar, or if not the same standard of sound reduction in regards to sound studies and sound mitigation of where we are now.
And then you're agreeing to the eight-foot wall, and then what about the north side on the corner as you were entering into or exiting the car wash, facing Hosking?
As of right now, I don't believe, from my memory, that that is a part of our development plan right now. If staff produces that condition on the property, I'm not at liberty to say what the tenant would feel on that, but today, we're here just for if that section of the property can be approved for their use. If staff and the commission feels that that's necessary, I'm not at liberty to say if the tenant that is there would, for lack of a better term, accept that sound wall. I would lean on the sound study, given the fact that we've had to prove the mitigation factors and prove that what is being proposed now is in line with what staff would require and what the commission would require. That's what I would lean on, that at this moment, we feel that that's proved and is mitigated up until this point. The further of that wouldn't be on my jurisdiction.
Question to the staff, do you think it will be better if we recommend adding a sound wall on the north end as well?
I'm not a, that's not my area of expertise, but when I review documents such as this noise study, again, if you're looking north, this would be on the north side of Hosking, those are residents that's in the area of blue. When you add the sound reduction measures, and in this case, the area to those residents in blue up there still remains above the noise standard. We have had other conditions or other car washes where we did condition, and again, which is why we put it in as an option, where you could put a curvature sound wall. This will move a little bit slower, faster, and I'll show you. This is White Lane in Buena Vista. We have a curved sound wall there that pushes the sound more towards Buena Vista, away from the residence to the east. This one has residence to the south, and we put a sound wall on the southern end of this building, which would then push the sound more towards, in this case, Golden Corral. And this one is yet to be built, but it does not have one of those. So we identified four car washes near residential, and two of those have a curvature sound wall, which is why we give it an option for your commission to consider.
And I would request, sorry to interrupt, if it is being considered as a condition of approval for the extended sound wall with the curvature, that the tenant and the applicant are able to, because I believe, Jamie, there's silencers on the, there's silencers and noise reduction, a part of the actual car wash equipment that needs to be required, and the planning has to sign off on that before building permits can be issued, that we're able to see if the curvature sound wall can be not required if the proposed silencers and the proposed blowers are still, are reducing where of an area of concern may be.
But, so looking at this noise study, this was after the masonry wall was put in, and then also the silencer, right?
That is the proposed.
So the noise impact is still there?
Yeah, that's the proposed silencer. I'm not a car wash expert, I don't know how their equipment works, just in the building. So there might be potential that they can do a more expensive, not expensive, but a more expansive mitigating factor for a silencer and a blower, just that opportunity, that's all I request, but we're at the commission's liberty here.
So question to the staff, do we go assess the equipment first and then put in a condition to add the sound wall, or? wall, or?
Because of the PCD zone, staff can make minor modifications to the plan, if you would like. We could potentially, we could add a condition for a sound wall and then caveat it that if more expansive silencers are applied, demonstrating where a sound wall is not required, maybe then the sound wall does not have to be put in. But again, I would have to rely on an actual noise study to determine the impact of the silencers. And again, as you noted, this, this diagram here is with the silencers as proposed, this is what the levels would be.
Okay. So do we ask for their recommendation right now, or?
I can formulate a cognition.
Yeah.
And present that after deliberations.
Okay, and then can we go to the landscaping plan, please? Thank you. In, in one of the bullet points, I saw that, that the landscaping along the Hosking and H Street is going to be part of Phase Two. It's not going to go in right away?
Facing South H?
Yeah.
Yes, that is more of a constructibility reason, because the landscaping on South H cannot be constructed until the undergrounding of the canal.
Okay, and then on the south portion of it, should, are you able to put in a landscaping along the Kern Island Canal?
The south portion of it?
The highlighted portion in red?
In red?
Yeah. More than, I think it's showing on the places, it will probably take up some of the parking spaces, but?
Yeah, I, I don't, I, I don't, I would love to add as much landscaping as possible us as developers, we would like to, we live and breathe in this city, we want to represent this city how it wants to be represented. I'm for it, I'm just not, at this time, fully aware of the landscape implications on parking, because it might now take away from the constructibility of the building, or making it smaller or bigger. But we are open to more expensive landscaping in that red outline.
Just to match what you have up in the north and just match it along, all the way?
Yeah, I think there's some room there, given, I'm sure there's some architectural smartness that can be done in moving things around and making planners a little bit bigger and adding some things in. From what I see here without dimensions, I see that there could be that potential.
Okay. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Corr. Seeing as how there were no speakers in opposition to the project, I will recommend that we forego the rebuttal period, and I will now close the public hearing and return to commission for comments and action. Does any question, do any commissioners have question or comments? Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair Keeter. I will say that I think this is a great project, the Mr. Car washes, I assume that's who's going to be running it, that's what it says on the architectural renderings, anyway. But these are very, very popular, they seem to be very well utilized, they seem to be very well maintained. I see maintenance crews, you know, there at night, you know, doing work, and so I like the project. I, I also have some concerns about the sound walls along, along the neighboring houses, so I'd want to see the entire, the entire east boundary be done with the eight-foot sound wall, and I would support the, the arch, the curved wall at the north side. I think it's a little bit different to say what a sound study said, well, so many decibels, as opposed to sitting in your backyard hearing those fans running all day long. That's why I was asking about the, about the hours of operation. You know, you are up against the backyards of a lot of people along there. Will this enhance the area? I think it will, but I think we need to be sensitive to those people that are living on the other side of the wall. This is a very prosperous business, this is one of the biggest growth industries is these car washes, so I don't see it as a hardship on the, on the tenant or the developer to put that sound wall in on both areas, along the east perimeter, the arch, the curved wall, and upgrading that landscaping like is recommended in the staff, the staff's recommendation. So I would, I know that Commissioner Corr was talking about some compromise on the wall. I don't think we need to do that, but my recommendation would be to approve the project based on the eight-foot sound wall along the entire length of the property, the curved wall, and the upgraded landscaping as proposed.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Commissioner Corr.
I have a question, one more question for the owner. Sorry.
I think so, but.
Yeah.
They can only respond, I think.
Yeah, just limit just to the question answered, please, because we already closed the hearing.
So looking at this rendering right here, the back on the southern entrance, the Mr. Sign, is that a painted sign, or is it illuminating sign?
My experience of being involved in two Mr. Car washes, when they build it themselves, which they would be doing here, they would be doing a illuminated channel sign, which are the more state-of-the-art type of signage going around in new development.
So with this being in, with the wall being only eight feet high, and then this building being, the sign going above 20 feet, 25 feet, if this is going to be flashing in somebody's backyard, and from looking from their back windows, this is all they're going to see flashing, or turned on?
Yeah, no, absolutely, and that's understood, and if the commission feels it's necessary for on the southern portion to have them painted, so they're not flash, flashing, that's at your advice.
If I could just add to the discussion, so signs are not being considered with this request. Signs will have their own sign permit that they'll go through, to your point, Commissioner Corr. So we have, we have a couple of different elevations here that are being shown, and I draw your attention to that car wash now is flipped, so you have north arrow actually facing to the left, so that the car wash is not on, like, some of the previous slides that were up there. So what the mechanical elevation is, if you're sitting in your rear yard of those residents, that mechanical elevation is what you would be seeing. And to your point, although, again, signs are not being approved, you could add a condition that says maybe no signs on the mechanical side, or no illuminated signs on the mechanical side, because I believe your concern would be is, if I'm in that residence, am I going to have a Mr. Sign shining in through my windows or in my backyard? So again, you can, you have the ability with the PCD zone to require no signs on that side, or require no illumination, however you want to go, but again, the actual sign itself will be approved through a separate permit.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Corr. Do we have a motion?
Well, do we have a motion? I was hoping we could, we could draft a motion here, you know, collectively.
I believe, Commissioner Coleman, you made the motion to add, to add a condition with the curvature of the sound wall on the northern side.
Right.
To, and upgrade the landscaping.
And upgrade the landscaping.
I'm sorry?
And upgrade the landscaping on the south.
Upgrade the landscaping.
Yeah.
And add the curvature wall.
Right.
Curvature wall, and then no illuminating signs on the facing residential area.
Can we upgrade that motion to include, that was a good catch, I didn't catch that, to be honest with you.
So if you would like to amend your motion to also include no illuminated, no illuminated signs on the mechanical elevation?
Mechanical elevation. Again, the mechanical, this clarification, mechanical elevation is the side that faces the houses on the east.
That is correct.
Yeah, would it be a more appropriate motion to say, on the elevation facing adjacent residential? Because that puts it a little bit more in context.
Yes.
Case the mechanical flips, yeah.
I guess we give him the city attorney a minute to.
So we're good, so your motion would be to approve with a condition to add the curvature sound wall, a condition to add the enhanced landscaping, and a condition to, to have no illuminated signs on the side, the elevation facing the residence.
And the eight-foot sound wall along the east property.
That's already a condition of approval.
But the only condition is at 108 feet. Talk about that whole, like, being sound wall.
No, we, staff is recommending that the property line sound wall, that's eight feet tall and approximately 550 feet long.
Okay.
Staff is recommending that as a condition.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, okay. So does somebody want to summarize that, so we know what we're talking about?
Can summarize it again? So your motion, so your motion would be to approve the project with a condition for a curvature sound wall at the northern end of the car wash, a condition for the enhanced landscaping south of the driveway, and a condition for no illuminated signs on the elevation facing the residential development.
Yes, that's what I said.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Commissioners, please cast your votes.
Motion passes with conditions with Vice Chair Strickland, Commissioner Besheertash, and Commissioner Neil Absinthe.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
If I could, since we're adding conditions, I'll read the appeal period.
Okay.
So decisions of the commission are subject to appeal by any person that believes they are adversely affected. The appeal must be filed in writing within 10 days from the date of the commission's decision. The appeal must be addressed to the city council and include the appellant's interest in or relationship to the project, identify the decision appealed, and address facts and reasons why the commission's decision should not be upheld.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item seven, communications.
Does staff have any communication items?
Yes, just recognize that Commissioner Besheertash was reappointed for another four years to represent Ward Six. We are also updating our website when it comes to emails for commissioners. We're going to make it a little bit more user-friendly. Your personal email will not be listed on the website. However, behind the scenes, if there's comments for a specific commissioner or commissioners, you will receive an email, but just know that that is an email that's being forwarded from the city website. You will be receiving some test emails from TS Test, or Tech Services Test, so you may be receiving some emails just trying that out. If you have any issues, if you want to either respond back to that, or at least include me on a response, I can make sure that we can get any issues resolved. But again, your personal email won't be on the website, and that will allow some latitude if you want to change your personal email to something else. It won't be available for the public to see, but you'll still get correspondence, and then it will be up to you to correspond directly with the commenter. Right now, we do not have a meeting for May 16th in two weeks. Our next meeting will be tentatively scheduled for June 6th. That's all I have.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item eight, commission comments.
Does any commissioner have any comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item nine, adjournment.
This meeting is adjourned at 6:35. Have a great evening.